Trustee Barry.
Somebody mentioned earlier, it looks like you're on the case. I can honestly tell you that we are on this case. This is not the first hot issue, hot topic that faced in public schools over the last 20 years that I've been kind of sort of involved. But what I see every time when an issue comes up is we get in here, we start yelling at each other, we start yelling at the speakers, interrupting them. This is a debate. This is not just locally, this is debate at the state level, at the national level. I don't know where this is going to end up. But we do have a superintendent administration that we, seven of us, trust. And if he is not doing what we believe is the right thing, we will step in. I heard rhetorical questions, would you want to have your kids? Well, I mean, as a parent of five successful students in this district, I made some decisions as a parent, you know, 20, 30 years ago. And yes, my kids are better off because, you know, decisions that their mom made, decisions that I made. I don't think this debate is anywhere near where it's going to peak out. So there's going to be more discussions. And I can honestly say on behalf of all of us here that, you know, we welcome these discussions, but it needs to be, it needs to stay civil. This is not very unique to Dearborn. I've seen some, I've seen some really, really, really ugly meetings nationwide. The only thing I want to bring, Mr. Wall's not here, where is he?
He just went to the bathroom, he'll be right back.
The only reason I want to, I mean, and Joanne's taking the minutes here, and I know Mr. Salee's in her room. What I've been studying around the nation when these, this discussion in particular nears the peak is bullying in the district against students is on the rise. And there's a list of duties of school board members here, and, you know, educate students, inspire students, but one of them that kind of likes relevant tonight is provide for the safety and welfare of students. What you might think, or what he might think, or I might think, that means, I know one thing. We started out this meeting earlier with bullying prevention. I just, you know, Mr. Wall is here now, please take some notes, let Superintendent Moleko and like I mentioned earlier, Mr. Salee, I almost made you a doctor, Salee, so, Inshallah, Joanne. Okay, but let's keep an eye on our students, their safety, as adults, so we can continue this discussion. Just because we don't sit here and clap when somebody says something, or maybe try to counter what you're saying, does not mean that we agree or disagree with you. We're here to listen to you. This is a Dearborn Public School Board business meeting, and part of the agenda is listen to our constituents. We want to hear from you, we welcome you. There's people in this room right here, when there was other discussions, you know, there's a couple in particular that we didn't get along, and now we're very good friends. Why? Because we hurt each other. We still don't agree on a lot of stuff, but we're good friends because we hurt each other, we listen to each other, we have phone conversations, and they're very, very civil. Yes, let's continue this discussion, and let's see what is truly in the best interest of our students. But that's all I wanted to make sure is that we're paying attention for the bullying in the schools. Let's make sure that message goes to Dr. Moleko, please, thank you.
Anyone else? Next item, please.
Action items, special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items? On this agenda, which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude those from the motion below.
Trustee Thornton.
I've got a question on number four. I do not need it pulled.
Okay, just a question on number four. Trustee D'Ambragio.
I have a question on number 10.
Also don't need it pulled, just a question?
No, don't need it pulled.
Trustee Moses?
I also have questions on 10.
Okay. Trustee Barry, did you have your hand up?
I did not, but I know there's a couple other board members that have questions on number 10. Why don't we just go ahead and pull it and discuss it separately? I'd like to get it pulled.
We can, we can do that, absolutely.
Did Chief Shaheen leave?
I think Chief Shaheen left, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any?
So pull four.
Pull 10.
I mean, I'm sorry, pull 10, but just a question on number four, yeah.
Okay, so move that action items, number one through nine, 11 through 12, be approved as recommended in this agenda, with the exception of 10.
So moved. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Thorpe and support by trustee Barry. We have a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. The question on number four.
Question first.
My apologies.
Number four, we've got multiple contractors coming together for that. My count is nine different contractors on this job, and my concern and question is, that's a lot of different cooks in the kitchen. How easy is this going to be for us to keep this process moving forward? And do we have a general contractor that's going to keep this moving down?
Coordinated.
Coordinated.
Yeah, we have a construction manager. Can you hear me? We actually have Clark Construction or Construction Manager. They have one superintendent on site. Once these projects get going, they plan on bringing up to like eight to 12 superintendents going to be managing these projects for us. We actually split it up that way because it's actually easier to make sure that the work gets done on time. If you narrow it down to just a few contractors, in today's market, you could run into labor problems. Also, if you narrow it down to just a few contractors, if you just have problems with that one contractor, your project will come to a halt where we could not lean on the other vendors, contractors, excuse me, that are working on the other buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Were there any other questions on number four? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrokov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Now, if you'd go ahead and read 10, and then we will have a discussion on that.
Recommended action, move that the board approve the inter-local agreement for Dearborn Public School District for Police Services for the 2022-2023 school year, with the option for an additional four years through July 31, 2027, and the amount not to exceed $500,000 for the 2022-2023 school year and future years in accordance with the agreement per Board Report 22-35.
Okay.
We have to have a move.
Yeah.
So moved.
I have a motion by trustee Petrokov, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Moses will second it. And we'd like to start the discussion. Now, I think Mr. Wall is in, in a good position to answer a lot of questions here, but specific police questions, since the chief had to leave, we may have some questions that cannot be answered there. Go ahead.
I'll get started.
Trustee Barry.
Do I understand it, please, my colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong, this was a grant that we had?
The city had the grant.
The city had the grant, correct, thank you. The city, previous, former police chief applied for the grant, got the grant, and provided SRO officers for our district. They've been an amazing asset for Dearborn Public Schools, I mean, nobody will argue that. But from what I understand, now the grant's out, and the city's looking for us to finance it. This was brought up at a, correct me again if I'm wrong, please, trustee Watt or trustee Posthoff, it was brought up at the city relation meeting. It was never really finalized?
Right, we had, we had a very brief.
Brief, very brief.
Yes.
That's how I remember it, and now I see it as an agenda item to move forward. I mean, once we assign committees, and I'm not advocating for, I guess, at this point, we want to have a discussion, once we assign committees, I think it would be a good idea to wait and see if there's a recommendation that comes from a committee to the full board, then we can have that discussion. This didn't hap, this is, this didn't happen that way. So, I mean, I know, I know right here, the background information is part of a strategic plan, does the, says the focus area, the whole nine yards, is this something that the administration wants to move on, on their own, without, you know, the committee approval or committee recommendation? How did we get here, I guess, is my question.
Please.
Okay. The grant that the city received has a traditional, these type of grants, they start off at 100% value, and they scale back, you know, by either a quarter or a third to a point where it's no longer funded. Dr. Moleko and the mayor had some discussions on this, and it's something they wanted to continue and move forward. Obviously, you're aware of the financial hardships at the city level, and so they had a conversation, and they directed me to work with legal counsel from the city and from our own legal counsel and come up with an agreement how we could continue. It's proposed to be funded from the enhancement fund, so that's money that was brought into the district by Wayne County allocated to us by $1. So that was a process how it came to be.
Sure, sure, but again, I mean, this is something that the board of directors or the trustees is going to vote on, and we do have a committee that's supposed to be working with any, you know, partnerships with the city. So that's why I'm kind of like confused, why is it on the agenda? Go ahead, trustee Petrokov, please.
Well, just to help, help you.
Yeah, yeah, I want to hear, yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Have clarity. When it comes to contracts, we, we do give authority to the superintendent, and the mayor is the other contractual partner with that. It has been in board briefs, so we were given an alert that this was being worked upon and developed, so that probably would have been, I don't believe it would have been appropriate to talk with it at city relations point, because the city relations is to explore a variety of partnerships. This is a contract that was between city administration and our administration, so I think that it wasn't inappropriate for them to move forward, but we do have to vote on it. And the time to have the conversation wasn't through our committee, but through the board briefs and then contact the superintendent at that time with any questions or concerns. And now is the next opportunity before we take a vote on it to have further our understanding of what this implies. But we've never had any contracts that have gone through the city relations process. That's not really what city relations role is.
Exactly, but this was something that was discussed at that meeting, and I know a couple of my colleagues had some strong feelings on that, that they shared with me, at least, I don't know if they shared with anybody else, so that's why mission discussion.
Yeah, it is unfortunate that the city has lost the grant opportunity at this point, that it has worn out. One of my questions was going to be to Chief Shaheen, if the opportunity arises again, would they be going after another grant opportunity so that we don't have to continue to share this big a burden all of a sudden? I am concerned, because the city was looking for ways to balance their budget when the millage renewal didn't pass last year, and the city had to find opportunities to recoup some finances, and since we benefit from the SRO program, they took it as an opportunity to place the financial burden upon us, to take on this responsibility. I would have to say at this point, while I'm not happy about the fact that, and I hope that we can find another grant opportunity to help offset these costs, I also think that the SRO program, if it's done, if it continues to do well, as it has in the past, and that's going to be one of my questions I'm going to have, then I think going forward, it's an important piece that we need to finance as long as we financially are able to, in order to not lose those opportunities to have the officers within our buildings.
Sure, no, me personally, I'm very happy with the officers in our buildings, I think they're very, very needed, to be honest with you. It was, you know, half a million dollars, you know, I keep hearing that the city needs to balance their budget, but also we have a budget.
We have, we have a budget too.
Half a million dollars is a big chunk, especially, we know it's coming down the road.
And we didn't anticipate having to take on that responsibility.
Yeah, so I guess another question for Mr. Wall, since you're very involved in this, were you given the heads up that this grant's going to run out this year? Was there any discussions like in previous years?
I believe Dr. Moleko had that conversation with the mayor last spring.
Okay.
And that's when I started working on it. Just as another side fact, the state does have a competitive grant for school safety we can apply for, for school resource officers specifically.
Yes.
That was a meeting we had on, earlier this week, or actually last week on Thursday, and they actually released some of the details, that is going to go through the state of police process, and not release the details yet, but they were very clear that anything eligible for this school year would be covered underneath that program, so we are going to apply for that when the opportunity.
And that was going to be my follow-up, trustee Petrokov, you know, police chief can apply for a grant, and maybe we should be looking for some grants.
Right, so we're going to look to that specifically.
Thank you for that update, yes, appreciate that.
Trustee Thorpe?
Perhaps it's too soon, but the recommended action item is saying that this would be a five-year length. And I don't know if people are hesitant about it because of the potential cost, but if we are able to switch, and we said that this is just a one-year agreement instead, would that mean anything to anyone on the board? That we don't have to feel that we're necessarily on the hook for a five-year term, even though it says we got 90 days?
To cancel.
To cancel this. Would that make any difference to, to anyone?
Me personally, I'm not advocating against the SRO program, or, you know, we have to, you know, we got a free ride for five years, and we have to pick up the tab, okay, but I was just questioning the process, how we got here, and now I understand, yeah.
Trustee Moses?
I had a question regarding the number of SROs that we currently have, and the number, if that's going to be increased, or is that of the same? And if their time in schools is, is being increased by this contract? And I also had some of the reservations of this being a five-year thing, and ways of looking to finance it through grants.
Yeah, the initial contract when it came from the city was 180 days, and I basically said, that's not feasible for us, because, you know, that would be too early for us to know if we could fund it for the following year. That's how it got down to 90 days, because that puts us in our budget process, that in April, we usually have a good idea, because the governor comes up with their plan in February, on the value of what's upcoming for her budget plan, so it gave us a better idea than 90 days.
Trustee D'Ambragio.
So does the SRO program cover the football games, basketball games, all the activities that we have SRO officers at?
No, it currently does not. We're paying for those regardless previously before this agreement, so that would continue as is. And I think I missed one part of your question is, these are officers that are dedicated from the hours from eight to three, or 3:30, whatever the normal school day is. Previously, that was not the case. They would be available part of the time to be here, they can obviously still be called away for a safety emergency, but these are actually dedicated to the high schools for the entire school day, which wasn't the case before. They would come and go, depending on what their time of need. And I do believe there was eight previously, this one only includes five, but they're dedicated five.
Trustee Petrokov?
I'm not certain, it's unfortunate that the chief had to step away, because he would probably know this answer, and you may not, but I want to have it out there anyhow. Part of the success of the SRO program, and part of the reason that we embraced it, was to form relationships between our student body and the police of our community, and they were specifically vetted and tasked with this program because of their ability to interact with the student body in a way differently than what the normal interaction of a police officer on the street would be. And we don't want to lose that relationship that we've worked at building with the students and the relationship with the police officers. I saw that they're going to pilot a plan to have the officers in uniform, four days out of the week, and then the fifth day, they would be in their polo shirt. My fear is that, and I'm not sure what the reason is behind the shift of the attire in the school buildings, but my fear is, is that for a lot of students, the uniform may be off-putting or intimidating in some sense, of a more authoritarian appearance in the building, rather than building the relationships of the student body with the officers, viewed a little bit less threatening in the building. So I would like to know what the reason was behind this shift, and, and what the thinking is behind it. And I want some assurances that the officers that we have placed in our buildings are officers who are ready and eager and capable of interacting with our students, in a way that promotes a positive experience for them, and builds relationships, and doesn't present a, a strident tone in the buildings of, you know, being there as police only. So that's, that was my.
Yeah, the chief did commit to make sure the officers had SRO training to be affiliated with schools. I've known in the past year, I've seen them both in uniform and in casual clothes, I've seen them both ways. I'm not sure what the intention is now of the four versus one, that I can't particularly answer.
Right, I didn't think.
And I knew, know that we had a concern also, if they're dedicated to schools, they get called away, what's going to happen? Well, chief said they'll make the commitment to backfill, to make sure someone is here, maybe not that particular officer, but someone backfill in case they're out on vacation or ill that day.
But is that backfill also going to be vetted through the SRO program, then?
Right, that I'm not sure of, that level of detail either.
I, I just, I don't want to derail this program for what its intentions are.
Yeah, if we derail it this year, it's going to be very, very difficult to bring it back, and just to kind of, I'm not going to try to answer your question, I can tell you what I've seen, the interactions between the SRO officers and the students are very, very positive.
And that's what I've seen as well.
We just had one of our, you know, finest retire, and Fuad Makbil, and just the love that he got from former students and staff and everything, was just amazing, so they do a, they do a tremendous job, so.
But now we're kind of shifting how, you know, with the new, and, and no offense, I, I know Isa Shaheen very well, I've known him for decades, I, I have great faith and trust in him, but it's somebody who is taking on a program, and, but we're, we're paying the bill, I want to make sure we're still getting the best product.
So do we want to visit trustee Thorpe's idea, I'm sure, in the contract? I would be okay either way, so I'm just trying to put it out there to see, because you have some reservations.
Well, I have, I have reservations, but I also don't, my fears is that if we're not committed to it, how committed are they going to be? If they feel that we're only in it for a year, and we could walk away from it?
Valid point.
I, I worry that that could be problematic for them, if they don't think that we're going to be utilizing them, because this is a, a large dollar figure for everyone.
Mr. Wall?
What I would recommend underneath that situation is still to prove the contract as is, but the board would require, you know, a report or affirmation sometime in February, March, before the 90-day window, to see if they wanted to continue with the program. Does that make sense to you, that you prove it as is?
Yeah, we've kind of vetted.
But the board actively engaged at the decision whether to continue or not, before the 90 days term comes up.
Well, we, that's, I mean, according to contract law, that's in there already, pretty much, the first 90 days.
Correct.
Yes, we don't intend anything.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good.
I was just going to say, we have 90 days, so if this isn't working, then we do, we can just give them the 90-day notice, so it's not like we're not locked in necessarily for five years, we still have that 90 days, so I think that's where, I think we have that, that opportunity, or if we need.
And the city will have to readjust their budget.
Trustee Thorpe?
Well, while we're voting on this tonight, the city council still needs to take this issue.
Correct, correct.
And maybe, I'm assuming, Mr. Wall, you or someone else will be at that meeting.
I, I already said that I would be there, and if trustee wanted to come up and ask some questions.
And then if the police chief is, is there, he could possibly be answering some of the questions that we've got.
It sounds like Jim's volunteering to be with you, too.
I would suggest everybody write any questions they have to Dr. Moleko, so we're prepared, and give to the city in advance, so they would know what to ask for, they wouldn't be blindsided.
I'm just going to make a phone call.
That, too.
One thing I just want to add, I've said it many times at this table, I am very, very proud of our SRO program, and that it's not always the way across the nation, some programs are problematic, and so the fact that we have dedicated officers, we have, that have built that relationship, and that has been the purpose, is to have the students in them, build a relationship that goes beyond the classroom. And I've seen pickup ballgames in the park with SRO officers, and, and it does go beyond their school, so I just can't say enough about how our program has shined, and I want to see that continue.
I think former chief Hadid did a great job, you know, finding the right personalities to be in the schools, and I'm very confident that Chief Shaheen is going to be the same thing.
I am, too.
Yeah, so.
I agree. The one thing that I did want to ask the chief is, how will this look differently than we've had before, besides the uniforms? Just in a nutshell, what things may look different? So, but I will have those added to the list.
Please send them to Dr. Moleko.
Anyone else, any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambragio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrokov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Summary of agenda action items.
Oh, I'm sorry, there'd be time, too.
Summary of agenda action items, number one, approval of warrants, number two, approval of award to NWEA, number three, approval of an award to Schreiber Roofing Company, number four, approval and award to DKI International, Inc., Wally Kazurski and Company, Pontiac Ceiling and Partition, DC Buyers Company, JJ Construction Corporation, Quality Air Systems, Inc., Miller Bolt, Metro Electric Engineer Tech, and O'Donnell Electric, per Board Report 22-29. Five to eight, approval of non-instructional instructional personnel items for P12. Number nine, approval of financial statements. Number 10, approval of inter-local agreement per Board Report 22-35. Number 11, approval of master facility planning contract per Board Report 22-36, and number 12, approval of donations. Next, discussion items, there are none. Continuing on, Board of Education business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
We got several emails concerning the book issue. Yes.
Anyone else?
Just for the record.
They got rid of the feedback problem.
But it must have been you.
Watch yourself. Yeah, just, just wanted to put it out there, just because we don't individually respond, we do read them, and we take every one of them into consideration, so thank you.
Next, board member committee and organization reports.
We had a couple of committee meetings today. I'll go first, if that's fine. We had the policy committee earlier today at 5:00. Number one, we discussed the dress code policy. Right now, the middle schools are looking into their committees, and the high schools will look as well, so they are still in discussions, so nothing to report out for dress code. Numbers two, we had an update to the policy regarding guidelines for school colors, logos, and mascots, and it was just to make sure that we have more of a branding, so that colors over the years aren't necessarily losing, getting lighter or darker, so just trying to make sure that there's a template for branding for all the schools. The third was the policy regarding emergency situations at schools, the verbiage was changed to reflect any updates that the state requirements may be, so just to have that updated when the state updates those. The next was the policy, just a beginning view of what a policy, updating our policy, our cell phone policy would be in the middle schools and high schools. We looked at a rough draft, I believe we're still waiting for one or two of the executive directors to look over it, but we were just shoring up the verbiage, because a lot of that was antiquated from what cell phones were 10 years ago, so just updating that, and, and then just discussions about whether or not we wanted to, the contract with Niola ends in springtime, whether or not we wanted to continue with Niola, or do we want to perhaps look into what other entities would be there that may work better for us than Niola? So that discussion will, has begun.
Just a quick question, when you were talking about dress codes, you said middle school committees, is it going to be a uniform dress code for all seven middle schools, or it is a separate committees?
That is, that is the idea, to have more uniformity across the board.
Yeah, because that's sometimes where we're lacking, gets us in trouble a little bit, okay. Thank you.
And not uniforms, uniformity.
Correct, I was going to say, when you say uniform, I think some other kids may have panicked that are not watching this, but yes.
We're not, we're not advocating uniforms, we're advocating all the dress codes.
That's a whole different discussion that we want to talk about.
I was there many years ago when we started that one, too.
Trustee Thorpe?
The building and site committee met beforehand, also, we talked about a couple different items, one of the big ones is the work that's been going on in the buildings. We're going to be putting close to $100 million into the buildings, and this all comes from the start of COVID, when we started getting all the ESR funds. While some funds are dedicated ESR funds, and they're going into the buildings, some are going to be coming from general funds, but they're only coming from general funds because we took some of the ESR funds and were able to divert things, so we're able to come up with all of it. It's going to keep. It's gonna keep going for a little while. Every timeline you ever knew on construction is even more crazy than it used to be, because nobody wants the work, they're already overbooked, uh, nothing is, is built yet, and you gotta take a year and a half to, to plan for it, and even
Everything has chips.
E- even, even getting inspectors out on site is problematic at this point. Uh, the CareHawk system, all the clocks have been installed in the buildings across the district. The, um, the, the training on it is ongoing. And, Mr. Wall, did I get it?
Did good. And, and thank you for the board for putting, proving Bid PAC one today. That's the first four elementaries with the ESR funding that we're starting that process.
And can I just add that along, because this is important now that school has started again with the CareHawk system, but we are also, um, doing Alice training, and the city police have, uh, dedicated, uh, officers who will go to the, all three of the feeder track school systems that we have here, the Edso, Ford, Dearborn High, Fortson feeder tracks, and train all of the staff at every building, um, about the Alice system, that, because the city of Dearborn has three trained officers in the Alice system. So you will be, um, hearing from your students, uh, when they, uh, come home periodically about what is going on for, um, their safety and security in the buildings.
Any other committee reports? Next item.
Next item, Board Member slash Superintendent Commentary.
Have some commentary. Trustee Moser?
I just wanted to say that the open houses that I attended were terrific, held with a lot of attendance from parents and students alike, and the activities were, uh, fun, and appreciate all the principals and all the staff members, everyone who works for DPS, uh, for a great start to the school year.
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
Um, just an update, that the Dearborn Education Foundation is having their golf outing on Sept- on Friday, September thirtieth. Um, uh, so that is one of the largest fundraisers that the foundation has. And then also, um, in the news, I believe it was last week or the week before, the new mental health, um, crisis line from nine-eight-eight. Um, just something to continue to remind ourselves that for those who are struggling with suicide and mental health, and the discussions that we're having, that we need to be mindful that there are, um, organizations out there that are, um, that we can use as a resource.
Trustee Pechikov.
Yeah, I just want a final follow-up on, um, all the citizen participation today. And I want the community, the parents, our staff, to understand that there isn't a board member here, there isn't a teacher, parent, librarian in our buildings who would intentionally expose our children to anything that we thought was going to be harmful in any way. And if errors have been made in the accessibility to something that is truly inappropriate for our students, it will be corrected. But the outright assault on, um, access to, uh, the diversity of ideas and concepts that exist in the written book should still be, uh, applauded and rewarded for, um, promoting our students into understanding how to deal with difficult or different concepts. And I don't think that we should throw the baby out with the bathwater, which is, what the fear is when we hear these conversations, that this is a slippery slope, and that there could be unintentional consequences to a handful of, um, challenges turning into something much more egregious. And I wanna make sure that everybody understands that we don't want any student to be exposed to anything that is totally adult-oriented, but neither do we want them to be limited in their ability to, um, have those opportunities to read other people's thoughts and perspectives in the future as well.
Thank you, trustee Pechikov.
Anyone else?
One thing I would, oh.
Sure.
Just wanna give a quick update, that when Dr. Maliko made the visits last week, he, uh, stopped to check out the bathroom situation for us, and all those bathrooms have been, you know, repaired, and all have stalls on it. And if, just a reference to the school closing for Dearborn High due to the plumbing issue, one of the things I did find out, that vaping is well and alive, unfortunately, in our schools, that there was a large conglomerate full of vaping, you know, pens and stuff, paraphernalia in the pipe, and that it contributed to the blocking of the pipe.
Worse than wipes, I guess.
Yeah. One thing I wanna say in that vein, and then I wanna do, make a comment about what trustee Pechikov said, um, was real quickly. Um, our students, we give them, and we, we do the best we can to give them facilities that they need, to give them bathrooms that are clean and, and well taken care of. And we recently finished, um, fixing some bathrooms, and they were torn down. The stalls were torn down. It's unacceptable. You're not hurting, you're hurting your other students, you're hurting your accessibility to bathrooms, which is just insane. And the thing, same thing with the vape pens. You need to just respect what you have, because when you're unable to have it, that's when you miss it. So I just wanted to make that comment. Um, on the vein that, uh, trustee Pechikov said, I just wanna give a shout-out to our media specialist and, uh, all of those that work really hard in our district. And they are qualified. We trust them. They're qualified to do the jobs that they have. And we rely on them. So chin up, I know things are difficult right now, but, um, we do trust you to do the work. We trust that you care about our students a hundred percent, and that you are there to, um, to do the job that, that you have trained your lives for and have dedicated your lives to. So thank you for that work. Anyone else? Next item.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Moser?
One question about what, um, Mr. Wall mentioned about vaping in schools. So I'd like to know what we're redoing to combat vaping and smoking in general in our schools, um, whether it's assemblies, teams at schools, uh, peer support. Um, would like more information on that, and if we are shortened, uh, what other ways can we explore to combat this phenomenon? Because it's, it's widespread among the youth, unfortunately.
Trustee Pechikov.
Um, today I'm wearing a mask because I just got a call before, on my way here, that my, uh, five-year-old granddaughter who just started kindergarten in a neighboring school district has already been exposed to COVID, and I was just with her. So I didn't want anybody to inadvertently be exposed here. Uh, that being said, we're going back.
Now you told Jim.
There's a reason why I'm wearing a mask.
I'm exposed to a lie.
I told, so that being said, we're going into another season where we had hoped to have, but, uh, they're talking about a tremendously rough flu season, and we really don't know where, we've just gotten into it. We've all relaxed our guard. And the COVID protocols have basically kind of slipped into the background right now, uh, on our website and probably in the classrooms, I would assume. So I would like to, um, know, um, how re- ready we are if we have to, uh, ramp up some of our protocols from years past, um, in order to be prepared for another season of potential illness. I'm not an, I'm not wishing it, I'm not anticipating it, but I just wanna know where we're at with that, um, and are we still ready to move?
I just wanna add to, oh, real quickly, I just wanna add to that, though. We are still losing nine hundred Americans a day to COVID. So I just wanna put that out there. People have forgotten it, but that is true. Okay, we need to extend the meeting?
Motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Berry, supported by trustee Moser. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosia?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Pechikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Something that I wanted to follow up with, I did, and I wanna find out our, uh, data regarding how many kids are actually using the libraries and checking out books. And I think we're hearing that not many kids are actually checking books out, so I'm just curious to see what sort of data we have, um, for that. And then, um, also wanting just to see the updates as to the, um, permission slips for, um, those parents who maybe don't want their child to have access to books.
Trustee Thorpe. Sorry.
And now that we're extended, I can talk slowly. Uh, I just wanted to share with the board that I had a conversation with Dr. Maliko on Friday, talking about some of the items we hit on today, especially the inter-local agreement and the grant that used to fund it. And I brought something up to him about the idea of having a dedicated grant specialist within our district. A district our size, having at least one person that their job is to go find us money, I think would be a good resource for us.
Um, I would just say, we did try that one year when I was, when I was on the board, uh, a number of years ago. It wasn't very successful, unfortunately, uh, because grant writing is a unique skill, and you also have to have the collaboration of a lot of moving pieces of information in order to be successful with the grant proposals. And it was very difficult for an outsider to, um, be able to, uh, collect all that data that's required in a grant, and we found that it was actually easier for people within their certain areas of expertise to be able to put together a grant, um, more successfully and in a more timely fashion than somebody who has to go and find all the information in order to write a good grant. I'm not necessarily negating it, I'm just saying that we've tried it in the past, and it, and it unfortunately didn't, didn't go as we had hoped.
Just to piggyback, just to piggyback off of it, I think that if we were to seek that, that position, I would suggest reaching out to MASB first, and then MNA, the Michigan Nonprofit Association, because there may be, um, uh, candidates there that you can, um, pull from.
Thank you for that. Trustee Berry?
I don't wanna start with no, but I kinda agree with, uh, trustee Pechikov. Many, many years ago, we had an attorney, that's where he excelled, is in grant writing, and he would get, uh, commission on every successful grant. Maybe that's something that we can, uh, look into, remember?
Yes, I know who you're talking about, but that's also the one that it, it didn't, um, we didn't get very much, um, unfortunately. There was a lot of struggle with that because of his ability to get access to all of the information he needed in order to, and he, uh, the commission, uh, wasn't, he was not real fond of that, um, style of pay.
Anyone else? Next item, please.
All right, next item. Future meeting dates. This is not on there, but this was added earlier. Uh, Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, the HFC, what is our committee name? Uh, President Evaluation will be meeting at five PM in, uh, the president's conference room. Uh, Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee meeting, six PM at the Administrative Service and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. And Monday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, P-12 Board of Education meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Ranchy Boardroom.
We are adjourned.